Here, trustee Rogers here and no trustee Snoblen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, there's no poll. The poll went missing. I don't know where that went. Okay. Public comment, public comment questions. Anybody have any public comment?
I do. Um, probably more for you, Brian. Just wondering, when the board is meeting off premises, should it be just the board? Should it be with a private citizen who is not on the board if they're meeting with other parties regarding all of these things going on?
If it's posted as a public meeting, anybody could be there.
Right, but I mean, they're having a private meeting for disposition of property or whatever.
Two or more trustees should never be meeting to talk about district's business except when it's posted as a meeting.
Right.
Because they're a majority of a quorum.
Right. Should there be someone in that meeting who is not part of either party?
Well, there shouldn't be two of them meeting privately like that.
But somebody who's a private citizen who is not on the board, should they be involved in that meeting? I just want clarification.
If one trustee, one trustee can meet with whoever they want.
Sure.
Two trustees should never meet.
Right.
I don't care if the president was here.
Right.
Doesn't make any difference.
Right. So if two trustees are meeting with another party regarding disposition of what's going on.
Okay.
Okay. We'll say it's one trustee even. I don't really care about how many trustees there are. But should there be a third party private citizen who is not part of the existing board, nor are they part of the other side of the conversation?
I mean, there's nothing legally that prohibits.
That's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
The prohibition on meeting with people deals with two or more trustees not at a public meeting. One trustee can meet with whoever he wants.
Okay. But the two, I understand. I just wanted clarity because it's not clear.
Yeah, they can meet with whomever they want.
So, and they could have anybody there?
Correct.
With them.
Well, because there was a couple of times when, I mean, President Rogers and I met with representatives of Lake Forest, Libertyville, and the Libertyville Fire District.
Sure.
One trustee and me.
Yeah. But you are considered part of this.
Yeah, I'm an agent of the district.
But should I be? Let's say you and Rogers are meeting there. I have nothing to do with the board whatsoever.
Right.
Should I be involved in that meeting ethically, legally, should I be involved?
Okay.
Well, it doesn't matter if somebody else, if you want.
Well, that's why I'm talking, that's why I'm asking him, Dan.
While I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the attorney. If I want to have somebody else, no, but if I want to have somebody else present at a meeting with you, that's up to me.
Could or should is the operative term.
That's what I've been looking for, is clarity.
And again, there's no prohibition against it. There's no requirement, you know.
Got it.
A trustee can meet with whomever he wants. Should he be meet, well, there's no prohibition. There isn't.
Right.
There is no answer to the question. Should he, you know?
Probably not appropriate, but there's nothing that says you can't.
Well, and in fact, in some cases, with a three-member board, in some cases, that's the only way to get business done because the two of them can't meet. So a lot of times, one will launch out, you know, with the board's blessing usually knowledge to say, you know, go meet, talk with them about whatever it is.
And that blessing and knowledge should come in a meeting.
Correct.
It shouldn't just happen because somebody decided it's okay.
Well, correct. So for example, that meeting that I attended with President Rogers, the Lake Forest, Libertyville, the board had a meeting, appointed, anointed, whatever you want to call it, President Rogers to serve as the contact for the board and then to come back and report.
Sure.
With updates.
Yeah.
Just like the, just trustee Graham had one and trustee Snoblen was a different one too, just because it's the only way to comply with the Open Meetings Act and at the same time get work done.
The only violation that legitimately occurs is if two trustees conduct business outside of the meeting.
Two or more, correct.
That's the only violation of the law that exists.
Two or more trustees. Well, that's the only time a meeting would constitute a violation.
So that's the only violation?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, so Marson Malinowski, so I have a couple of quick questions. I'm hoping the board can answer for me. Under agenda items for discussion and action, if there are agenda items that specifically relate to me as a representative of the No Wood Fireman Association, can I speak to those points then or do I have to speak to them now?
Are you talking about the list here that Deputy Chief Vissel had given me?
That's part of it, yes. And then also.
The list of the donations?
No, a list of the, no, that's the association property.
That's the one that you and John gave me.
Yeah, that's the association property. It's not donations.
No, you and I met over at Panera.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No problem.
That's correct.
I can't remember too far back either. Go ahead.
Yeah.
And what else?
In speaking to that, so I think you erroneously, number 11, you have donations from association. I mean, it's association property. It's not donations. And then as far as number five, missing gear and helmets, that's kind of both related to the association. So can I speak to those points then?
Sure.
Once the trustees start to talk about them?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I have just a statement in regards to the conduct.
Help me with the name again. I've written about 4,000 times, but.
Teresa, T-E-R-E-S-A-C-A-R-I-N-G-E-L-L-O. I just want to just state in regards to the conduct that was here on September 30th, the last day of the firefighters here. Mr. Graham, it was a disgrace, especially from you, being an ex firefighter, not allowing us what we did, conducted, of the lowering of the flag, especially coming from you. I know you were on the phone with Roger, but it was a disgrace. The note on the door did state October 1st at seven o'clock in the morning, but you decided last minute at 12:02 to try to close those down.
Okay, no, no, I'm going to stop this.
No.
No, I am, because we are not going to, listen to me, we're not.
What are you going to do, threaten me? You want to put two detectives at my door again, Rogers?
Brian?
Ma'am.
It was a disgrace.
Okay, it's a, this is time for public comment.
It is a public comment.
Okay, well, we're not going to do this anymore, okay? You're not going to come in here and just lash out at us for no apparent reason.
Am I lashing out?
Yes, you are.
I am just standing to comment.
No, you are. So if you're upset, I understand that. That's fine. It's done.
Was it appropriate?
Yes, it was appropriate.
Was it appropriate?
Yes, yes, it was.
Why?
Okay, I'll tell you why, all right?
I remind the board and the members of the audience that we have rules for public comment. They're in the back of the agenda I passed out.
Right.
One of the rules for public comment says somebody speaks only when recognized by the board president. Another rule for public comment said comment should be made professional and courtesy. Another rule for public comment says, another rule for public comment says the board will not answer questions. The board should not answer questions.
Okay.
I wasn't speaking loudly. I was just saying it was a disgrace. Here we were outside trying to lower the flag for the last day. It stated on the door October 1st at seven in the morning. There was nothing stating at 12:02, especially when there was a comment from Ryan Lamb stating that Chief Harlow knew about the closing at 12:02, when Chief Harlow had no clue that the lowering of the flag at 12:02 could not happen. He had no clue. I'm not sure where you got that information, Mr. Lamb, because no one knew about it. The firefighters didn't know about it. The three POPs that were inside here didn't know about it. No one knew about it. That was a miscommunication, sir. Not sure where you got that information. Not sure how you became a trustee at the last minute. It was sad.
Two minutes more.
It was extremely sad. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Next, anybody else? Okay, that's the end of public comment. Okay, discussion or action? Brian, the proper procedure for creating, designating items, trucks and such as a surplus?
So I'll explain. The Fire Protection District Act says that the district can only dispose of personal property which is no longer needed for district purposes. The process by which that's done, I think I addressed this a little bit at the last meeting, is typically we have an inventory, a list of what that equipment, you want that equipment to include.
Okay.
Once we have a list of what that equipment includes, and you know, in some cases it needs to be, you know, more specific than others, but once you have that list of equipment to do, I would typically prepare a resolution for the board, for the board's consideration and action, to recite in the statutory authority, identify those items as surplus, which is typically is an exhibit. So that's why it's just a laundry list that get attached, and then directing disposition. Where you could get different resolutions is if you have different disposition desires for different equipment. Now, there's a couple of ways that could be handled, but that's why I need to know what the equipment is with some detail so we can be able to identify it and then what you want to do with it. Now, the what you want to do with it is really, that's a really a decision for, you know, the board.
Mm-hmm.
You know, do you sell it? Do you donate it to another unit of government? Do you donate it to the state? Do you, you know, if you donate it, if you sell it, you know, what's the fair market value, you know? There's a lot of options.
Can we be as simple as saying things like, like calling it a block or a pallet of, and then list the stuff out? Excuse me, I'll turn this off. Listing it out like in a pallet or a block of specific items, if we list it out as a group of items, or do you, you know, like office equipment, we have to list out 25 pens, four paper clips, I mean, how?
That level of detail, low dollar value items, typically you don't need, and I don't need to know you have 13 pencils, you know, we don't need that.
Well, you want to do it the right way.
Right, but I mean, low, where you run it, the greater the value, the more specificity.
Okay.
So you want to get rid of, you want to get rid of a multi-thousand dollar computer, I'm going to want to know.
Okay.
What's the make, what's the model, what's the manufacturer, what's the year, what's the serial number? I want to know all the details. You want to get rid of a box of pens? God bless you.
Okay, so as we get deeper into this with Obenhoff, if they come in here and tag things out as item one, item four, item five with a description, then we can declare those items surplus for auction?
If, well, if we have that as the inventory list, then it could identify, you know, item number one is a pallet consisting of various administrative supplies, including but not limited to pens, paper, you know, reams of paper, whatever it is, you know, there needs to be something more than pallet number one.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying, but pallet number one consisting of pallet number two consisting of pallet number three consisting of.
Now, right, now, when you start getting the specificity of pallet number two has the office equipment that I just talked about, computers, you know, one computer, I, anything high dollar value item, I'm going to want details on it.
Right.
And our resol, no, I don't. The resolution that the board considers and approves should have details. What I want doesn't count here.
Right, so we need to put together a surplus list for you as detailed as possible.
Correct.
And then have you draw up the proper paperwork for the board to approve.
Correct.
Okay.
And like I said, the listing of equipment is one of the two functions. The other one is an indication or an idea of at least the consent of the board, how you want it disposed of.
Okay.
You know, in some cases, that may be dictated, another, but that's something I'm going to need some direction on.
Okay, how we will dispose it.
Right. Like I said, it could be, a lot of times you'll see, you'll see some, I see radios that are 15 years old, and I, chief officers tell me, they're valueless, you know, 15 years old. And what, if I know that, I'll say, you know, pallet number one consists of, you know, various communications equipment, at least 10 years old, which have no monetary value. And so you donate that, you dispose of it, although you have to comply with laws on disposition of equipment, you know?
Well, at least according to, and I'm jumping around a little bit because it's to do with this, Obenhoff felt that like even the, there's a box of radios up there that I'm being told, I looked at them with Mike Havy to find out their value, and he said that they don't, they won't work for anybody. That's why they're sitting up there. He said, "You'll find somebody that'll buy those." So we'll create a box or a pallet of radios, you know, that are however old they are and see what happens with them. Okay, so, okay, so that's on the to-do list, is getting things listed out and getting you a list of items, trucks and such to declare surplus, which will tie in with the ladder truck and the other, the other truck. Okay, number two, truck appraisals. Bob, did you have something, or Pete, were you guys looking at having E1 look at that stuff or?
Yes, Deputy Chief Cronin's been dealing. We're specing out a new pumper right now and he's got some contacts with E1, so bring somebody out that might have a good idea of value on those for you.
Okay, and then maybe from EJM on Rescue 44, maybe we could contact them and find out what they think the value of that is with the mileage that's on it. And same with the other rigs. We'll try to as well get values, and then we're going to let you know what that is, right, Brian? We're going to send you the details on the truck with a legitimate value appraised on it, and then how we'd like to dispose of it.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so we'll get that ready for the next meeting as well. Chief Seibert, you were helping me out on the grant status on Ladder 44.
Yeah, there's the AFG grant that was, the way they got that through that grant, there's some procedures that you have to follow there. I have a contact at the AFG office. We're dealing with an AERPA grant right now, and she just basically said that no matter what you do, you're going to have to contact AFG before any actions taken, sale or transfer of the grant, but there's a lot of red tape that has to be gone through on that, and whatever decision is made, it has to be approved by the AFG body before you do anything.
Okay, so what's the next, what's the next step to make that continue to move forward?
Well, I think the appraisal of seeing what the value of it is, I do know that if there's any sale, that you're limited to take in only the amount of the percentage that you matched the grant with, which was 10%, so.
Right, but you and I had spoke about transferring that.
Yeah, that's, but all this stuff, the AFG office has to handle that and make sure that if it's going to be transferred, that the other agency meets the requirements and that everything's filed properly. It's definitely, they've done that before plenty of times in AFG. Trying to sell it is a little harder with AFG grant. They're not equipped so much to take the money in. They're more giving people the grants.
Okay, are you, is that something that's now back in our lap to get a hold of AFG to?
I have a contact. I can give you that. I think the smart procedure would be to get the value of it, an appraisal. If everybody agrees on what the, you know, E1 comes in and appraising it and says what it's worth, it would be, if you have a plausible value that you can tell the AFG is worth that, it could be helpful.
Would you be able to work with Bob on that?
Sure.
So, okay, Bob, sure. Okay, so we'll get on that. And then E1 is going to look at the, at the engine?
They can work at both. They're both E1s.
Okay, but I meant on the, on E44.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll handle the ladder, okay. All right, truck appraisals, grant, missing pagers, chargers, and handheld helmets. I've got Mike's, Deputy Chief Vissel's charger and pager. That's the only matching ones that I have. I don't have, I've got what, I think, three chargers and two pagers, and the pagers don't match the chargers, and the chargers don't match the pagers. So I'm not sure what the best way is to get the word out to everybody, all the firemen, and ask if those could be returned. Any thoughts on that, Brian?
No, I, district property needs to be returned to the district for disposition, just like we said, that surplus property we just talked about.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Can I say something?
Yeah, please.
I have two pagers that I, I have my own, and somebody else gave it to me, but not all of us have pagers.
Okay.
So that's why we, we had our active 911 that we bought for ourselves.
Right.
For calls, and then, because people were already here, so we didn't have that many pagers, and some of that stuff, like upstairs as you saw, was old. Some of the pagers just went missing and people told me about, and I, like, I'm not trying to be.
No, no, I know. I appreciate you.
But I'm just saying that a lot of us didn't have pagers, so that's why we all bought.
Do you think there was more than, than one? I mean, or do you think?
I have two, our chief has one. He said he hasn't returned yet. He returned that. I'll look around for my, make sure.
Okay, we have two, like I said, there's two pagers in there with no chargers and three chargers with no pagers.
Okay, I would, I'll talk to my guys and I'll.
Yes, sir.
I'll meet up with.
Yeah, I got hired five years ago, and I was like an out-of-district hire, and I mean, there was a group of us, you know, all of us, you know, we'd come in and stuff. None of us were issued pagers because we were out of district. We were responding from home to these calls, so.
I don't, I don't know how many pagers and chargers there are. My assumption was there was more than one.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'll, either I'll, you know, I know you guys, so we'll meet at a time to get the rest of the pagers to you guys.
That'd be great. Just let me know when you can, when you collect them up. Like I said, there's chargers without pagers and pagers without, or, and pagers without chargers.
Would I be incorrect, and I mean, this list of compensation, and it has call pay. I'm assuming that's guys responding to calls?
Responding from calls, our trainings, our, which, but you understand, our active 911 sends a page before it sets the tone out, so we still come down for that. Like, it's just like your e-dispatch. Our e-dispatch, our active 911 gets a call a little bit before.
So they could be responding based on that?
Right, right. That's what, that's what we bought for ourselves. So, and then also, you know, that's from calls, from trainings, from, you know, throughout the, for the snipers.
Okay. But certainly we have more than two or three pagers.
Right, and I have two, and I'll get you guys whatever pagers that we have left.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And I don't know if there's any handhelds out there or not. There was, there's part of one laying in on the, in the kitchen. It looks like, like half of it. I don't know what that's all about. John left his in the, in his car. I think you left yours on your desk, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I don't know if there's any other handhelds out there other than what's in the trucks and stuff, but we're just trying to put everything back together.
No.
Any other comments on the pagers and chargers, Bob?
No.
Okay. There was $1,000 of new helmets that the helmet, that the.
I talked, I talked to Fire Department, Jerry. We're going to pay for ourselves because those, those helmets were for the guys who was here over the last two months, and for me, I thought it was appropriate for them to get a helmet. So, and I, and I told Jerry that I don't have any money paying for it. We'll pay for it ourselves out of our pocket. So the bill is not going to come to you guys. I talked to Jerry a couple of days ago, and that bill will go to, go to me personally.
Oh.
So that's come out of you guys' budget or whatever you guys have.
Okay, well, since we're on the helmets, helmets and gear, what about the gear?
Okay, I took, I admit, I took four sets of gear. The four sets that are in.
The association.
The association that we paid for, I took that four sets. The rest of the else gear, I told them to leave down here and I disbanded them and put them on, on the rack or on the floor out there.
I, when, Mike, when you, when you went through and people, we were looking through the gear, that's, there was no current gear there, was there?
Most of it was expired.
Most of it was expired gear.
A lot of us, like, we were wearing expired gear. Like, all the gear upstairs that's in that room in there was getting donated, we were wearing expired gear. It's not, we were solely, we had a grant over 10 years ago for gear.
Okay.
So everybody's gear just was not up to par. So that's why when we came to you two months ago for a gig gear, we asked.
Because what John had mentioned to me was that the guys wanted to keep their gear because they were going to Lake Bluff, and I said, "Well, let's inventory it, and then once we get it inventoried and find out what quote-unquote value there is on it, we could talk to Lake Bluff and transfer the gear to Lake Bluff if it's, if it's Rockland's gear, then we could get it to Lake Bluff."
Right.
And then you guys, whoever's going to Lake Bluff could continue to use it.
Right. I, I took four sets, and that was the Colados, there's two twins, and I took Billy's gear and Zach's gear, which the district paid for. The rest of the gear, it's over 10 years old.
Association.
Sorry, association. That was over 10 years old. None of us had like up-to-date gear. That's why we had that money prior, and then that $10,000 that you guys.
Didn't we allocate money last year for gear as well?
Yes, but he messed up on sizes, so we had to go back to the drawing tables on that, so.
Didn't we get that gear?
No, we did not. And if you, you talked to Jerry.
Yeah, he said there were four sets of gear that were ordered that you said didn't fit well.
They didn't fit at all. We sent it back, so.
Okay, so you tell me.
You guys did not get a bill for that.
So you tell me that the disposition of the gear is, other than the sets that you have, there's, there's no other missing gear that you're aware of?
No, to my knowledge, no, besides, like I said, all the gear upstairs in that other room.
Yeah.
Which is over 10 years old. I was going to donate it to Fire Department. They come in with it in a big truck and just give it away to people out west or whatever, less fortunate, and the gear inside the room in there, and all the boots and stuff.
Okay, because, again, I'm only a little bit confused on this because when I met with you and, excuse me, Mike, Vissel, when I met with you and John, what you had, had mentioned or offered was for the guys to keep their gear and in turn.
Gear and helmets, yeah.
Gear and helmets, and in turn leave everything that we're going to discuss in a minute as far as being association property or donations.
That was an option that you said. That's correct.
Right, okay, I'm just trying to understand that, and now what I'm, what I'm getting is that there's really no gear though.
I mean, it's.
It's the gear that we're.
There is gear.
There is better than no gear.
It's in the expired lifespan, so the actual resale value of it is basically nothing.
Okay.
You would be looking at potentially a liability problem trying to do that.
Right.
So what John's idea was, was to have the firemen that are going over to Lake Bluff to keep their gear and wear it when they're, when they join Lake Bluff, so they have something because Lake Bluff doesn't have anything.
Okay, do we have an inventory of the gear that Mike is talking about? I'm not, I'm not quite following where that gear is right now. I know where four sets are.
That all the gears are not on the racks out there?
Well, there is gear out there, but when I looked at it, it didn't look like current gear. It looked like.
Some of, that's our gear. Like, we, some of us didn't have like brand new gear.
Okay, again, this is literally the first time that I've heard in a meeting that the guys are wearing expired gear.
Well, that's why, that's why our transition was over for me to order gear for the new guys.
That's happened many times over the years down here, Dan, because the expense that's involved with purchasing gear, it's not a, not an easy thing to just do one fell swoop and load everybody up.
Got it.
You know, it was always done in bits and pieces over all the years.
The four sets that you took, when were they purchased?
They're purchased in 2015, 14? I don't remember. Maybe 16? It's on the list.
Basically, the quality of your, Dan, you referring to John was talking about?
Right.
Just whatever's outpaying in the gear.
Okay, well, and again, during that, no, and during that discussion, I had never heard you or John say, you know, the expired gear out there. I, my assumption was, since they were using it, that it was, it was current, good gear that they wanted to transfer and use in Lake Bluff. I, this is the first time I've heard that, that it's all expired gear. I did, just didn't know.
It's good gear, that expired thing is more of a liability for the companies that make that stuff. They got to put like a lifespan on that equipment.
Okay.
Okay. The full-time departments, they probably cycle through that a lot more than we do because they have the funds to do it. We stretch it out a lot longer just because of that situation.
Okay.
It's always been that way.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything out there that's torn or has holes in it, but as far as the, the placard, if you will, or sticker that's on the inside of the coat that has the manufacturer date.
Yeah.
Probably most of that gear out there is probably in that expired category.
Right, okay, so there's four sets, how many additional quote-unquote sets of gear are there out there that there are firemen that are going to Lake Bluff that want those sets of gear?
Then I'm not for sure, I have to reach out to the guys, I'm not for sure.
Give me a round number, five to ten, ten to twenty, twenty to thirty?
Probably ten to twenty.
So you think there's ten to twenty additional sets?
I'm sure John could email you a pretty close to accurate list of who's interested in going to Lake Bluff.
Because that's why I was gonna order the, the ten sets of gear with that, with the money.
The gear that's on order now is what?
Well, you called Jerry and you had to cancel it and it was half, it was in production and he, and he's out of, he told me he's out of fifty-five hundred dollars because you guys, you, you told him that you guys won't pay for it. And I said, okay. And he's like, that's like a kick in the face to me because you guys approved the money, so I called Jerry and I ordered the gear, but now he.
We also called, we also, Bob emailed John after the resolution passed and said, cancel the gear before it went into production and it never got canceled, correct?
I, I sent, I sent him an email saying that based on the vote that we took, uh, at that last meeting that, uh, I think it was appropriate to discon, or to cancel the, the order for the gear.
Mis-humored, it's me, because the next day.
It's okay.
The next day, I, I called Jerry and I said, okay, I need, I need these sets and I need you to, um, and order them.
Where are you with, with this Jerry fellow?
Uh, when I talked to Jerry is when he, he's told me he was gonna contact the manufacturer and see if he could put a stop on it.
Right.
He has not gotten back to me as to whether or not.
Well, yeah, well, he's, I mean, he's got a full, he's on shift.
Because I told him, I said, if it can be stopped, I said, I would like it stopped.
Right, that's, and that's why.
That's the last.
Right, and that's why he, he called me and asked me what was going on, and I was like, like, I, I have no idea. He's like, you, you, you talked to him, I was like, okay. And that's when I discussed the helmets and stuff like that. But like you said, he's like, if I do this, you know, it's in production already, I'm, I'm, and you, you said that you won't, you won't pay for it, and it's like, okay, and he's like, there's already five thousand dollars in, into it already, he said. And he's out of almost five thousand dollars. I was like, all right, it's like, I'm sorry, and he's like, I had no idea.
Well, I, I told him if it could be stopped, to stop it, if it couldn't have been stopped, then he needs to let me know that.
Okay, I'll, I'll, uh, reach out to him and, uh, tell him to give you a hot call.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we're still looking to take somewhere between ten and twenty sets of gear that are out there for the guys to use to go to Lake Bluff, is that, would that be a fair statement to make?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you've got four sets of gear currently?
I do.
All right. What is your feeling on the quote-unquote ten to twenty sets of gear that are, that are out there that guys want to go to Lake Bluff with to help out both them and Lake Bluff? Do we have to do anything other than allow them to do that, we have to make a surplus on that as well? To, to allow it to go to donate, because we would be donating it to Lake Bluff, correct? And if we donate it to Lake Bluff, then we're in a different category than letting someone take it, correct?
There's two ways to approach it, the prob, the issue you have here with this is it's a nominal value.
Well, plus if you could be in, uh, legal issues there if you, if expired gear, but there is a way through the offices of state fire marshal to donate old gear and then it absolves you of liability if the other department signs off, honorable.
Well, the gear you're talking about according to this list was, uh, November of two thousand sixteen, so that gear is still.
That's only four sets.
That's the four sets that we.
That's the four sets.
The other expired is probably all expired.
Or, like, close to expired, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so, how do we, how do we help everybody out here? The four sets of legitimate gear, those can be donated to Lake Bluff, correct?
Correct, and, and, and the chief is right, the state fire marshal is a program to do that.
These are the four sets.
Probably easier to follow that.
Yeah.
Than my way.
Even if it's not expired, you still should follow that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do, or I mean, that, that's.
I would tell you, any, any equipment, any equi, any equipment you intended to donate to any unit of government, you could follow that, donate to being an operative.
For the CLC, for the tech campus, so.
Those four sets the district doesn't own, it's the associations. So the four sets are.
I'm gonna, I'm trying, I'm trying to work around this because the, the four sets of gear still have to be going through the state fire marshal, I believe.
Well, if, but if they're not district property.
It's not district property.
All right, well, okay, um, well, that, that's another, that's, that's part of the next discussion. What I'm talking about is the rest of them, so we wanna get ahold of the state fire marshal and tell them we wanna donate these sets of gear and you'll come down, would you come down and go through these?
I will.
And, and lay them out as to the, the sets that you want?
Yes.
Okay, and then the state fire marshal will follow his procedure and will donate them to Lake Bluff, is that correct?
Correct. And then, may I ask a question? If, uh, Five Alarm is unable to cancel the order, would that set also be included in this set?
We don't, I, I have to cross that bridge when we get to it.
Well, it already, it already sounds like he's out, he, based on Tito's comments from, um, whatever gentleman's name was.
Jerry.
Jerry, he's already gonna be out fifty-five hundred dollars, so it already sounds like it's too late to cancel the process.
I, I, wasn't there ten thousand dollars worth of gear ordered?
There's almost fifteen, because remember.
Fifteen thousand.
Because remember you, that five thousand, we ordered.
Money for the previous.
The previous, and then, then, then the ten thousand, so that's fifteen dollar dollar in gear.
And, and I'll just make this statement, you, you know, without even talking to anybody. I recall, I recall the authorizations.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
And once you place the order, an agent of the board, agent of the district places the order, it's there. And if somebody prepares it and then, and relies on that and is out their detriment to it, it needs to be paid for.
Well, and if he's saying.
Bob's been working with the guy.
If he's saying fifty-five hundred, then all of the gear was not in progress then.
Right, well, he started and stuff, I mean, he's like, as of right now, if I take it off. Like, everything's in process, like, everything's been cut. You know, it takes, it takes time to do all those sets of gear. I mean, I, I, I don't know, I didn't get into it with him because he was a little upset. So I can tell, I'll get, we talked, you can tell me, give an email, call you, let you know. But he, he was already in production of it because he had came down here, he, he had sized everybody up. I mean, those gear is set for those guys, like.
Okay, where were you with him on it, because you talked to him?
I, like I said, one last conversation I had with him, he was going to check and see what the status of, of the production was. And he was gonna get back to me, I have not heard back from him.
Okay.
So I, I don't know for sure.
You wanna follow up with that?
Yes, I can follow up with Jerry.
Um, you wanna get ahold of me whenever you want and we'll lay out these sets of gear. And will you contact state, state fire marshal and, and set up a time for him to come down here? Do they come down, Pete, and look at that, is that how that works?
I don't think they need to, I mean, as long as you document everything.
Okay.
And, and, and the key there is gonna be the documentation, the, the inventory. You know, I have five turnout jackets, I have five turnout pants, I have five bottles, I have five masks, I, I, whatever. Tell me what you've got, but it's gotta be a detailed list, I mean.
All right, well, let's, let's.
You, you can hold the, the fire marshal and then let me know and then we'll.
Well, let's try to get that moving and going, if you're okay with that, with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that, with the gear that we have here, the older gear here. But if we're gonna get stuck with fifteen thousand dollars worth of brand-new gear, I, I don't know that that's something we're just gonna donate, is it?
Well, no, I think if, if we're gonna end up with fifteen thousand dollars worth of new gear, then I think it's a matter of going to Lake Bluff and talking to them that, you know, Bill and Bob and Fred are gonna, are gonna go to Lake Bluff and they have, I'm just pulling names out of a hat, and, and they're gonna go to Lake Bluff and we have new gear for them, uh, or gear that's made for them. Would Lake Bluff like to share the cost and end up with a discounted gear and, and we're helping out our guys on the way?
I, I don't want Jerry to get, get hit with this.
Right.
Uh, but if we can work out something where we at least get something in return for the gear, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, Tito, we're gonna keep going on, working on the gear, see what we, uh, what's in production, what we have to take so we're not unfair to Jerry. And then we'll sit down, you, are you okay with being the liaison on this with the guys and the gear and, and working with the other gear and the new gear and all of that? Because you were kinda handling that anyhow, right?
I was.
Okay, so, you wanna keep moving forward on old and new gear and see where we're at by next meeting? Does that sound good?
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll do that. Okay, uh, number seven, uh, we talked about, or I was gonna talk about rather I should say, a, um, getting like a ten-yard dumpster inside the building here, um, and doing a, uh, a kind of an in-service day of, of cleaning up stuff. Other than, than documents, Brian, just, just stuff that's laying around, magazines and, you know, paperwork and stuff. There's no concern about disposing of any of that, right?
Not, not public materials.
Right, okay.
It's, it, it's all the records that the secretary keeps, one of the treasurer.
Right, so, um, again, I'm just gonna say disposables, how's that? Uh, is there, there's no issue with, uh, reaching out and looking for anybody who'd like to volunteer to help with that? Uh, Chief Karani had said that there's a couple, uh, firefighters that are on light duty that would help and Pete said he might have a couple guys. There's not a problem with having a, uh, an in-service day of going through stuff and, and, uh, cleaning up stuff that we know is good records. We were gonna, or I was thinking of designating a specific office to move stuff into that office uh, to get through the Records Act with then the proper stuff.
And, you know, handling the disposition of records is one thing, handling of stuff is a different thing. The only concern I have, when you, when you say in-service day and volunteers, Fair Labor Standards Act says, somebody does work for you, you gotta pay them.
Okay.
And I don't care what you call them, Swahili, Martian, but volunteer, but if they do work for you.
What about these, their guys?
No, I. I, I don't know, it, you, you're, you're in the legal gray here and I tell you.
Well, that's why we're talking.
I tell you, the safer, the safer approach is to pay them at least minimum wage.
Okay.
You, you won't go wrong paying them minimum wage.
I can't go where they're gonna pay me.
What?
I was volunteer to help, I'm not gonna get paid.
Yeah, I mean.
Can you volunteer to help and not pay him minimum wage, you don't wanna be paid?
Yeah, they're chiefs.
I know, they're chiefs.
I mean, if, if somebody truly wants to volunteer their time and do the work, that's fine. Nothing, nothing prohibits that.
Okay.
The problem is, okay, I'll give you the example, so O'Connor, O'Connor's a volunteer, O'Connor comes in and O'Connor helps clean up. And, and a couple weeks later, it's like, well, they asked for volunteers and I was volunteered. Well, now I just transitioned, I've gone from being a volunteer to being an employee. And you, you know, you don't have to pay them, if they're truly vol, if they're truly volunteers, you don't have to pay them. But understand, as soon as they change their tune and they file a complaint with the Department of Labor, you'll be paying me a lot more money than you had to. Yeah, workers can, well, they've got insurance though, it's on the premises.
Okay, so we, we can get a dumpster in here, uh, I can certainly come down and, and empty stuff out. Bob can certainly empty stuff out, uh, if the two chiefs.
If Dan and I are gonna take this, uh, we can be in the building doing this work as long as we're not discussing.
Yeah, don't talk about district business.
You want this magazine, I think that's district business, okay. Uh, and then you guys have got guys that you feel all right with, right?
I'm very busy, you can draft up a letter.
You okay with that?
Yeah, at least you've got something.
All right, you wanna draft up a simple letter?
To state the following, the following need persons.
Are volunteering their time. Okay. All right, we'll work on that, but outside people, if somebody else wants to help out, what do I have to do? Same thing, have them sign a letter saying they're volunteering their time. Will you give me a generic letter with the name open and the signature line open? Thank you. Okay, that's, uh, including the dumpster. Um, Bob, you had something on CLC, you had talked to somebody or something?
Well, I did contact, um, Chief Justice from CLC and asked if they would be interested in any of the, uh, either old gear or whatever, or some of the books that we have. Uh, and he said he would be interested in coming down and taking a look at it. Now, if he finds, uh, some books that they can use at the school, uh, he also mentioned being interested in some small equipment, I'm assuming he's talking about Hydra wrenches, axes, stuff like that. If that's something that we would be willing to donate to the, the class at CLC, is that something we can do?
This person, do you, do you, give me the inventory list that tells me how many of what item?
All right. Okay, Obenhoff Auction, I had spoken with the gentleman from Obenhoff and he walked through the building and said an online auction would be the way to do things like with the tool shed or the tool cage. He said he would make up multiple boxes of, of different, uh, tools in there and then do an online auction, they would come in and do, uh, a day to two days of listing everything out, uh, which then we would have to pause because then I have to get that to you, correct? In item numbers to declare it surplus before it can go to auction, correct?
Well, if the board at a meeting determines this is the route it wants to take, you direct the attorney to prepare the resolution documenting the items to be declared surplus to be approved at the following meeting, so we have it approved at one meeting and at the next meeting you have the resolution and paperwork to follow up, because you're creating, it doesn't exist right now.
Okay, so, again, specifically with this, if Obenhoff is gonna come in here and spend two days marking and listing items, they're gonna give me that list for items for auction.
Okay.
From there, we have to declare it surplus at a meeting? Or we can declare, I can get that list to you and we can declare it surplus and have a resolution at the meeting?
We, how quickly are you looking to, if I had two meetings, I'd rather do, do both at, at a meeting.
Okay, well, if, I'm gonna ask trustee Grum if he's okay with the terms that I'm gonna show you in a minute here. And then if they're okay with it, then I'm gonna have them come in in the next week or so and start marking and tagging items and grouped items, like, like I said, the tool cage. They said they would make up probably five or ten boxes of tools. Box one tools, box two tools, box three tools, um, because it's, it's assorted sockets and ratchets and all kinds of stuff. Then, once I get that entire list from him, then you want me to call a, a meeting to declare that along with the engines and whatever else surplus?
I was gonna say, if you're gonna call a special meeting, call a special meeting, give me a list of all the junk you got and I'll prepare whatever resolutions you got, you know, and you can.
So we can declare it surplus and do the resolution at the same meeting?
Correct, and in fact, typically that's what you do, is it's a single action.
I wanna follow procedure. So, on that, um, uh, Bob, uh, they usually have a, a six percent fee set for municipalities. They do everything for three percent, they charge thirty-five dollars per man hour to come in and take pictures and, and lot everything out, um, that, uh, that needs to be lotted out. And, um, and then, once we declared surplus, then they would, uh, post and have an online auction for all the stuff. Are you okay with that? Okay, then I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, Obenhoff's, uh, consignment auction as, uh, as listed, or as, as presented, Brian, is that okay with this? As presented?
The only thing I like, and not comfortable with, I hereby commission Obenhoff to sell the items listed.
Understand. Understand. We have to have that, but I have to get a resolution due, or I have to get a motion and a second and approval to engage with them for the terms on that contract to get to the next step. I'm assuming you want, because we're entering into an agreement.
I would feel more comfortable if we had the list of items to append to this.
Understood, but they're not gonna come in and do the list.
Without.
Without us agreeing that we're gonna do this.
So, I just inserted the phrase, it says to sell the items listed to be approved later.
Okay.
I don't got a list.
Right, well, right, and they're not gonna make a list until we tell them to go ahead and do it.
Until they know they're gonna get compensated.
Right.
That's, it's a chicken and egg question.
Right. So, you need a motion to accept?
Let me finish reading here. I got stuck on that sentence. Welcome to the life of an attorney. The other thing I just said is after the certification, I added for the Rockland Fire Protection District, because somebody assigned as a trustee, not signing individually. Okay. Then the motion would be in order to approve the consign, the online consignment auction proposal tendered by Obenhoff Auction Service, Inc. as amended.
All right, so moved.
Second.
We'll call both, trustee Grum.
Aye.
Trustee Rogers.
Aye.
All right, I will get ahold of them and get them going on that. Okay, donations from the association. So, Marson, we're, I think, at least as of this moment in time, we're moving toward the suggestion of John and Chief Issel and Chief Harlow. So, I think we'll, we're gonna table all of this until next month, and we can figure out the uniforms.
You mean the gear?
Yes.
The current gear that's here with the potential of the new gear that's on order with the helmets.
Well, we're working out the deal with the new gear.
It's all pending with that, yes.
Okay.
So, all the gear, all the helmets, and all the association equipments tabled for later.
Well, no, the new helmets, Tito said the guys that want the new helmets are gonna buy those. The existing helmets are what we currently have, and if those can go with people, that's fine.
Okay, willing to do that. If you, if we give you, like, if we discussion of all our equipment, would you be willing to the gear and the helmets and pay for those helmets?
Well, so, what you're, what we're looking at then is 15,000 bucks out of the district property that they're.
Not the new, not the new new gear, the gear is out there.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. You were gonna get together with me or Bob and go through that and get those, to those guys, get that going. Because I'm assuming that gear they'd like to start using, correct?
Yeah.
Right. Oh, I heard another yes. So.
Just reiterating with Tito.
Right, but what we have.
The sooner they can get their hands on it, so they can.
Okay, so, we will make the best effort, or Bob's gonna make the best effort, to find out through the state fire marshal how we get that off of our legal hands to make the guy in the end happy. And once that's out of our legal hands and we don't have any liability with it.
Put together the list of what you got. Give it to the guys. I'll follow up with the paperwork. I don't want guys responding to fires and that gear. That's not, it's not gonna happen, not on my watch.
Right, but if we, if the fire marshal releases us of it and we donate it to Lake Fluff, then it's their deal.
Yeah, I'll follow up, I'll follow up with that. You're giving.
Do you want to get this resolved sooner than next month, to me?
Yes, yeah.
If we get you the information.
If I had known to call the state fire marshal or somebody had instructed myself or Bob, I would've done it a week ago, Mike. I mean, I understand that we wanna get it going as quick as possible.
Like I said, get the list, because I'm sure the state fire marshal, I don't know what his process is, but I'm sure he's gonna want a piece of paper.
Where are those helmets now? Who has those?
The guys have the helmets.
They have all their helmets with them?
They have, yeah, because you said that they can have their helmet.
Right.
How many were there?
I only, I only got four in.
Okay.
So, you guys can get a bill, right?
No.
Right, I only got four.
We didn't get a bill, did we? Yes, we got a bill.
Okay. All right, I thought there was more than that. All right, well, let's continue to work in that direction and try to make everybody happy here. And as soon as we have something from the state fire marshal, Mike, I'll get ahold of, I'll get ahold of you, Tito, as soon as we get stuff. And are we gonna have to call a special meeting to do that, once we get the state fire marshal to donate it or let them start using it?
I think you can let them start using it before. You're right, you accept some degree of liability with it, but I think the greater liability would be not to allow a guy to have gear that's here.
Okay, all right, so we'll follow up. As soon as the state fire marshal gives us the blessing to give it to Lake Fluff, I'll let you know within hours of that.
All right.
Okay, all right. End of the year stipends. Where's the pay on this stuff? This sheet's here. So, I'm a little confused on a few of these things here. This is all current pay from this month, this list that I got here?
No, that's call pay. This is from John.
December 15th.
No, no, I'm talking about call pay. Let's start with call pay. So, the call pay, this is all current call pay?
I'm not.
This is John's list. This is not from Tito.
That's not from me. That, and from, I think he's listed from December 15th until September 30th, or wherever he is.
So, help me out with this. Call pay, I thought was paid monthly.
No.
No.
It's annual.
Annual.
Call pay?
Yes.
Okay, I, okay, I'm thinking the monthly.
No.
The other stuff we were seeing was shift pay.
It was shift pay, yeah.
All right, all right. So, this is call pay that's current?
Right.
Okay, then the officer's pay is where I get a little cloudy here. From 2017, Zach Beatty is exactly the same. Brandon.
Colazo.
Colazo goes from $200 to $1,250, and so does his brother. I don't remember jumping over $1,000, $1,050 from last year to this year pay.
They were top of their, like, you say top five, they're like number one and two in calls. Like, they're also officers.
No, no, I understand it, but officer pay has to get approved through the board, and I just don't recall that getting jumped.
How much is officer pay?
Well, 2017 was $200.
It wasn't officer?
No, 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 no.
That was their second pick.
No, that was their, that was their officer.
Yeah, right, because they were only.
They weren't promoted yet.
They were only, they were only for a certain amount of time, so they gave, he gave a little.
So, like, they graduated to the next level?
Right, so they gave a little kick. So, like, save their officers for four months. He gave an extra $200.
Dan on merit.
Okay, wait, but what I'm saying is.
Two of the busiest people here.
And I'm not.
Whatever system you guys had set up with the chief, John instituted those numbers through the system that was in place.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not denying or saying anything plus or minus on this. I've never seen this till to this day. I never was told, nor was this board told, that the, I'm gonna pronounce the name wrong again, Colazo, that Brandon and Brian, that their officer's pay is going up $1,050 from 2017 to 2018.
That's lieutenant pay. That's because in 2017, just before the officer pay went out, they were recently promoted.
So, there wasn't a full year of pay?
Correct. There wasn't a full year of officer pay. That's why it was only $200 versus whatever the amount is you have there.
So, it was $1,250 for 12 months?
That's a mixture of officer pay and call stipend.
No, 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 they're separate.
Officer's pay is officer, engineer, EMT, what else do you have? So, those just keep adding. That's how their pay went up. So, they have $500 for lieutenant's pay, $250 for EMTB, $250 for engineer, and their medic too. That's why their pay went up so fast.
Again, don't, Brian, with pay increase like that, is that, listen, I don't wanna short anybody what they got coming.
That's not unusual.
Is that something that we should've or needed to approve?
Something we've done from the last.
Okay, just one moment, just one moment, please.
If it's in the budget appropriations ordinance, you've already, it's already approved.
Okay.
And I was gonna say, it's not unusual, but that sort of compensation scheme.
Go ahead, Mike.
John's working within the boundaries of his responsibilities of these kind of numbers.
Right, understood, I've just never seen him before. So, that's, again, and then I've got a note here on Tom Flatter.
Flater.
Flater, excuse me, I apologize to Tom. It says that he had resigned in 2017.
Yeah.
Under officer's pay, there's a note that he resigned. But now I see him for $25 plus another $100. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, there's John, I have no idea. John, John.
Does he, is he, was he still active here?
Unless he's, unless he wrote as he resigned as a lieutenant.
Well, he, I mean, he ran calls with us. He, you know, he was, he was here. He probably did resign with John, we don't know, because he was, he's very busy with his own company in Newport.
Okay, but then he wasn't an officer here in 2018.
Yeah, he was.
He was a $100 officer?
But it says he resigned in 2017.
He hasn't made a paycheck from us since 2017.
Right.
You really need to simplify this. I'm just writing a question by John, he'll have a quick answer for you.
Okay, so.
To make it easier for you.
So, okay, let's get a little bit more generic on this, Brian. Since we're, what, nine months into the year, is, are all of these officer's pays at 9/12? Is that? How does that work?
And I need to ask, so, and maybe John can answer this. The call pay, someone said was, Chief Harlow had calculated for the period of December 15th of 17 to September 30th of 18. So, that's straight up. That's easy. For the officer's pay, I don't know if that's an annual stipend for representing December 15th of 17 to December 14th of 18, or if that's kinda like call pay where it's earned, I don't know. Somebody gotta tell me.
Well, we get an officer pay every, every year our stipend, every year.
So, this is.
Usually December?
It's an annual stipend.
So, the officer's pay here is an annual stipend. That ends in December.
Right.
So, then is that 9/12? Is that how you said we have to do it?
I was gonna say, if it's an annual stipend, it should be for the period like we just had here, from the nine months, well, actually, a little bit more, nine and a half months of 12. So, whatever, whatever that amount, that amount is, times 9.5 over 12. If I had my calculator, I could tell you, but I can't do that in my head. But it's an annual stipend, and it should be prorated for the period covered, which would be December 15th of 17 through September 30th of 18.
I'm assuming that's how John came up with those numbers.
Right, well, if that's the angle, but that makes sense, because that would be easy.
I thought, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, because I can deal with you, because you're sitting here, I thought your annual stipend was 3,000. Is that correct?
I honestly don't know. I didn't come down here with any intention of knowing what those numbers were. I came down to help, so whatever those numbers are, you have them on your.
Then, what's your annual stipend?
Wasn't important.
It's December?
I don't know.
His is the same as last year. There was a few that were increased.
Okay, so, so what it looks like to me is that the officer's stipends is for the year, is what I've seen, because last year, yours was 1,500.
Right.
This year's going 1,500.
Right, so whatever I had last year.
So, Ryan, then let me, let me get this straight then. So, what we're gonna owe these gentlemen, maybe there's some ladies in here as well, is the call pay plus 9.512 of the officer's pay.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what we need, that's what we need to calculate out.
Okay, the only ones I had in question was Harlow's, went from 3,700 to 5,000.
Yeah, shouldn't we have known about that?
And this Billy Neesley, I have had him one day on the payroll for the entire 12 months, and he has an officer's pay of 750 and call pay.
And call pay.
And he worked one shift.
He's a lieutenant, so it's 500, and he's an EMT. That's your 250. That's 750.
And he worked one day.
You could've shown up.
He has a full-time, he has a full-time job.
Yeah, it's one-day P O P.
This is all, these are all volunteer guys that come down and try to do what they can, and that's why.
So, wouldn't he work one day, so he gets a full 12 months?
He's an officer.
If he was here for trainings, when we had training, and I'd say, hey, that's not a shift, but he gets paid.
He's involved in officer meetings, he's involved in all of it.
Okay, but I did.
Yeah, yeah, he's an integral part too, the full operation that's down here.
Well, he's a full-time job.
So, so nine and a half 12s of this.
Right.
Plus this, and the only one else that you have in question, Bob, was John's. Did Brian answer that question?
To what?
Bob said that John's in charge of the rest of the officer's pay, but does the board approve his pay?
The board should approve all things.
Right, but I mean, the officer's stipends is what I'm getting at.
All I'm looking at is in 2017, it says it was 3,700.
And 2016, it was 3,700 also.
In 2018, it's 5,000, and I don't remember the board approving the increase.
We're gonna ask John to clarify Tom Flater's pay, ask John to clarify his statement too.
Okay, so, I will handle this, and I will try to reach out to John tomorrow and meet up and go through these call pays and these officer's pays and get them straight and get them to Tammy to turn in for.
As soon as you can, they'll be paid in two days, as long as you give them here.
All right, speaking of pay, I have.
These should be hot, these are hot.
Right, I have checks here for those who are here that want them.
I'll see the cash.
You take all of them?
Yeah. I won't spend it all.
No, no, I understand.
At least not one bloody cent.
I know it's in the cash.
So.
I'll just wait for it. Short and early.
Yes, please, let me just, oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, go ahead, chief.
Okay, I apologize, I have to go.
No, 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 go ahead, I'm sorry, this.
I just wanted to speak on a couple items on hand, the ETSV equipment.
Right.
That was done. ETSV came and took those out.
Okay, so that's all returned, we're all clear with that?
Yes, along the same lines, all Mavis assets have been returned to Mavis as well, including the Cigna masks and canisters that were upstairs.
All Mavis returned, okay.
And the drugs that were on Engine 44, ladder 44, and rescue 44 were taken and counted.
All right, and thank you. Thank you for handling the drugs, I appreciate that. And just for the record, Brian, chief came in and went through all the bags and got all the drugs out, because he's certified to handle them, and returned them for destruction or use, correct?
Yeah, most likely they'll be used in a paramedic class.
Okay, so we are drug-free here.
Besides, you have some expired aspirin and various other expired meds in the toolkit in the corner of it.
I can find more.
That can dislodge.
Okay. Yeah, we've got our in-service day, Brian. We'll throw aspirin out, you don't need a listener, I'll let you have it.
But just for September. Do you throw it out?
It was likely to have a bad effect, and I could dispose of it in the.
Then you, you're all set, is there anything else? I don't want to hold you up.
Unless you have any questions.
What were the three things you said? The drugs to kind of, the Mavis to Mavis and what? That's what I was missing.
Okay, um, real estate contract, Brian, you, you get that all muddied up? So you're happy with it now?
Your resolution is your last, I'll rip the damn.
Okay, oh, look at you. Okay, well, we're at that, so that's, that's a resolution for the real estate contract, pull it mow it. You, you are. All right, uh, motion to approve resolution two thousand and eighteen dash four zero four, resolution of the Rockland Fire Protection District, Lake County, Illinois, approving a listing agreement for lease for district property. Lease all that district. Make the motion, we accept it. Can I hear for seven seconds?
I made a motion, you must.
Oh, I bet you, okay, uh, motion by Grum, seconded by Rogers, we'll call vote. Trustee Grum?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers, aye. So that's fine. Uh, outside building maintenance, the same folks that we hired about a year ago, I've contacted, they're gonna come through and get everything mowed and pruned and trimmed and cleaned up, and then we'll have them just mow every other week, because that should be more than sufficient, if that's okay with you. Okay?
That's okay with you.
ETSB returned, drugs returned, Comcast cable. As per an email I saw to you, Brian, from Trustee Snoland, uh, asking that we hold off on Comcast cable and just leave it hooked up because it's a whopping six or seven dollars a month. Uh, we're just gonna leave that go for this month. Computers inside the building, you said if we're gonna liquidate those, you want numbers and tags and everything else on those, correct?
Hey, I need to know drill, make, make model.
I do asset verification and, so I agree with that.
Oh, great.
And I would say that's typical, just the make model of the year. The other thing is an estimate of the value, like I said.
Usually they have a useful life, and you'll see there's tagged when they were manufactured, a useful life for most computers are three years.
Right.
Some are five, depending on what kind of.
And that's why, if there's no useful value.
Right, and then we can, uh.
We have to be careful how we dispose.
Well, we have to, we have to blank them out or clean them off or whatever.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, especially with the stuff you guys got.
Just get a big metal.
Just, what is it, bleach bit?
We'll talk to him.
Um, okay, I actually have, uh, someone in computers, or you know, Carl can do that. Carl has the ability to wipe all those. So we'll hold on to that and Tammy can talk to him, you can talk to Carl and ask him if he'll wipe those computers. Okay, uh, and we did nineteen already. All right, Tammy, do you have anything else? You're gonna leave me for the eighteenth with the, um.
I'll have it to you by probably Friday.
Okay.
This Friday.
And you and I'll go over the treasurer's report so I can present it. And then, Brian, you'll have anything else that you want, um, on the, uh, on the eighteenth other than the, uh, the amended, uh.
Well, we'll have the public hearing.
Right, public hearing amended.
Public hearing and then catch and to adopt the amended budget appropriations for ordinance.
Okay, and then we, I, I got a notice, we're still doing the, I'll work with this lady from the county on the, um, on having the election here. That's of no interest to you or anybody else, right, and do that annually?
For November.
November sixth.
Okay, um, another gentleman had reached out to me from, uh, Williston, Williston Fire Department, if we were gonna get rid of anything. Um, he's working with some folks overseas and didn't want us to throw anything away that they could possibly use. Um, oh, I know we have one other thing to, uh, to deal with here. Um, here's an invoice for you. Um, so John had asked me, uh, Brian, and again, we can, uh, get this done sooner than later, I'll talk to John about it, to, um, come up with a dollar amount on his car that Lake Bluff might be interested in buying his car all decked out. So I went onto Edmunds and onto, uh, Kelly Blue Book and got the average value of the two thousand and ten Traverse, and I went down to my K V, he said the, all the equipment inside there, radios and everything, in a used condition, a fair price, it'd be about fifteen hundred bucks. So, um, what do I have to do if Lake Bluff is interested in this? Again, we have to list it out as such and declare that surplus along with everything else to sell it to Lake Bluff?
Well, between units of government, we could do just a simple bill of sale.
Okay, so I'll get ahold of Drew, and if he's interested in this, should we agree upon a dollar amount now that, for me to discuss with Drew?
I mean, if you, if you want me to put together the documents.
Well, no, if they want it, then I'll, then I'll go along with that. So according to this, um, trade-in on this one is between four and seven. Trade-in on this one is basically forty-five to sixty-five, uh, forty-five to sixty-five. So if we said the car was worth five thousand and fifteen hundred in equipment, um, talk to Lake Bluff about six to sixty-five hundred dollars for the car with the equipment. Is that okay with you if they agree on that to make a bill of sale up for that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll take that with me.
What's this?
Your notes, or give me copies of those notes, because it'll help refresh my memory.
Okay.
For the bill of sale?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's that. I will make a note on my paperwork here to, uh, L B. I'll contact Drew in the morning and.
Mike, John, because you reached what?
Tito, is there a Fern on the department currently?
Raymond Fern?
No.
Was there a Raymond?
Long time ago.
Ah, a long time ago.
Long time ago. Wow, what's up?
It looks like the national government is interested in getting information on Mr. Fern.
Oh, he's in the R B.
Yeah, he's in, he's in the military.
Well.
But he hasn't been on this department for a long.
Only because I was too. There could be a reason he may now be in the military that they need to check the.
Oh, yeah.
Having been in that.
He was here.
With the men in black suits came up to families, my family.
Any ideas about me how long ago?
I, I don't even know. I mean, he was, he left on good terms, so, I don't, I had no problem with him.
Right, when somebody calls looking for information on him, you typically don't wanna.
This is the federal government. It's the guy who go on, do background investigations. So, no is not an answer.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've covered pretty much everything for right now. We have a meeting on the eighteenth, correct?
At what time, please?
Six thirty, that's the time.
Yeah, that's the time we posted on the, that's on the budget hearing.
And it's here, right?
Yes. All right, with that, I will entertain motion to adjourn at six thirty-four. Second, all favor, aye, aye, motion adjourned.